Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the October 7th, 2013 City Council Meeting. And as we are continuing our new tradition of having Stillwater Schools lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, tonight, we have two honored guests and their special friend. We have with us Mackenzie Martin, 4th grade, and she enjoys swimming, is on the swim team, and is in Ms. Farrington's class. Is that correct? Wonderful. And her parents are Ashley and Jesse Martin, who are also here. Thank you guys for being here. And then we also have Hayden Hebert, and his parents are Rachel and Dalton Hebert. And Hayden is also in 4th grade, and he's in Ms. Bussler's class, and he likes math. So with all our engineers in the room, give him some applause for liking math.[47.62][47.62](APPLAUSE). Okay, so they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance along with Sparky. So will you guys lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(SPEAKING IN THE HALL) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys. We've got a little thank you for you all. We appreciate you guys being here and helping us out for that. Sparky, will you take your witness? (LAUGHING). Okay, we do have a couple of proclamations tonight. Actually, I left my...
This.
The bottom.
In the top.
Just right there on top.
This.
Perfect.
Sorry.
Okay, we do have a couple proclamations this evening. Our first one is on Fire Prevention Week, and I believe we have Fire Marshal Trent Hawkins and Assistant Fire Marshal Neil Moore here with Sparky. Come on up. Come right over here.
(LAUGHING). We didn't wait too much time, Sparky.
Okay. Whereas the City of Stillwater is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,500 people in the United States in 2011, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 370,000 home fires, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, with two of every five home fires started in the kitchen, and unattended equipment was a factor in one-third of the reported cooking fires, and whereas Stillwater residents should take the following steps to ensure their safety in the event of a home fire: Stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top; keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas; keep anything that can catch fire away from stove tops; install working smoke alarms; and plan and practice a home fire escape plan. And whereas Stillwater is reaching out to its citizens with a message of fire safety during Fire Prevention Week with the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme "Prevent Kitchen Fires", effectively serving to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6th to 12th, 2013, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Stillwater, and urge all citizens to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices and support the many public safety activities and efforts of Stillwater's Fire and Emergency Services. Thank you, guys. (APPLAUSE).
I just appreciate it. We thank this very much. Firefighters this year are doing quite a bit to ensure the public safety in Stillwater and to get our message across, and I think we're having a real good time with it. Hope everybody learns something and appreciates your time and effort.
Thank you. Let's get a couple pictures. Sparky, can you hold that? Perfect.
Probably the newest cadet, I guess. The newest new guy.
We're having a lot of fun tonight. I like it. Okay, our second proclamation this evening is for the 27th Annual Public Power Week, and we have just a ton of folks from our Electric Department. If you guys will come on in. And you probably noticed the...I'm going to call them the big toys outside, but I know they're not toys. Very cool piece of equipment. Okay. You guys want to introduce yourselves now or after the proclamation? It's one or the other.
Yeah.
Now, come on through.
All right. Lawrence Smith, Generation and Transmission Division.
Lee Jackson, Engineering Manager.
Vernon Hall, Electric Distribution Superintendent.
Larry Biswell, Supervisor, Electric Distribution.
Larry Crampton, Electrical Distribution.
Jake Marshall, Apprentice lineman.
Jeremy Hines, Electrical Engineering Technologist.
Glenn Doherty, Warehouse Supervisor.
And we've got Dan Blankenship.
We don't really know what he does.
Whereas we, the citizens of Stillwater, place high value on local control over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, locally-controlled, not-for-profit electric utility, and as consumers and owners of our electric utility have a direct say in utility operations and policies. And whereas Stillwater Electric Utility provides our homes, businesses, farms, social service, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electricity employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates, and whereas Stillwater Electric Utility is a valuable community asset that contributes substantially to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness, and whereas Stillwater Electric Utility is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place in which to live and work as well as contributes to protecting the global environment. Now therefore, be it resolved that Stillwater Electric Utility will continue to work to bring lower-cost, safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses just as it has since 1901, the year when the utility was created, to serve all the citizens of Stillwater. Be it further resolved that the week of October 6th to 12th be designated the 27th Annual Public Power Week in order to honor Stillwater Electric Utility for its contributions to the community and to make its consumer, owners, policymakers, and employees more aware of its contributions to their well-being and how it makes their lives powerful. And be it further resolved that our community joins hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in the celebration of public power and recognition that Stillwater Electric Utility is good for consumers, businesses, the community, and the nation. Congratulations.
Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
If I may, Mayor, I'd just like to share just a bit of history. I have the...actually, a paper here that's the history of Stillwater Electric Utility. And I think it's kind of ironic that we have Fire Protection Week the same week because it was actually a fire...this is my paper, thank you.
Up here.
I don't know. Sorry. It was actually a fire that prompted the City of Stillwater to get into the electric business ourselves. And an interesting, just a brief story is that the Town Council held a meeting on August 27th, 1902, to buy a dynamo for the city lighting system, also known as a generator. After several hours at bay, the board ordered a dynamo. The dynamo cost almost $3,000, which exceeded the $500 limit the council was allowed to spend without a majority vote of the town. Evaluating the situation at the next board meeting, the board reversed its decision on the dynamo order. After contacting the company to reverse the order, the company stood firm explaining that the contract was binding. This divided the council on what action to take. Some people on the council wanted to accept the dynamo. Others who opposed the acquisition of the dynamo used the argument that the dynamo was too heavy for their engine to operate. The city attorney explained that Stillwater was not required to take the dynamo. After months of discussions and arguments, the council agreed to set March 17th, 1903, as the date to purchase the dynamo. The council agreed the dynamo already arrived and sitting at the train depot was the best alternative. The council had left the dynamo at the depot since its delivery date, December 1st, 1902. It also...so, I mean, you think that things are, you know...I mean, they had quite a time getting off the ground here with the electric generation, and so I guess they made the order and the company said, "Here it comes." And they said, "No, we're not taking it," but it was set at the depot anyway, so...but the council...it set precedent for the city to maintain ownership of the light plant, and the major reason for the decision was that much of Stillwater's revenue came from electric sales and thus allowed for lower property taxes. So it's...there's a colorful history of our power system, and some of the things is very interesting to read in here. I thought to myself, you know, the more things change, the more they stay the same. So thank you very much for the proclamation of Public Power Week.
Thank you. Okay. All right. That's going to take us down to the Consent Docket, and we have items A through L on the Consent Docket. Does anyone wish to remove items A through L?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Consent Docket.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. And the Consent Docket is approved 5 to 0. Take us down to Public Hearings. And our first item is again to postpone this action to October 21st. Is there a motion to such effect?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to postpone this item to October 21st, 2013. And that is approved 5 to 0. That takes us to our second public hearing. Receive public comments regarding a request to close a portion of the right-of-way at 1400 North Boomer Road. Ms. Evans?
Yes. Good evening. Patty Evans, Development Services. Sorry, I do not have them pulled up. The property for this proposed MAP amendment is located on the corner of East Thomas and North Perkins Road, outlined here in the red.
It's supposed to be done by the closing right now. Do you want it closed?
I think it's a different...
Oh, I'm sorry. We're doing the closing. Okay. A portion of Boomer Road that is to be closed, that is requesting to be closed, is shown here in the red. It is across Boomer Road from the high school and adjacent to Domino's Pizza right here. The area is 40-foot wide, and it's currently functioning as a frontage road servicing the existing apartments. The closure is needed for a new proposed multifamily development, and the closure will align the right-of-way with the remainder of the right-of-way along Boomer Road. The applicant does propose to grant a private access easement to Domino's Pizza to maintain this driveway and their access in that driveway area, and an ONG gas line is located in the area to be closed, and the applicant has indicated that they will relocate those lines. Our findings: Number one, the right-of-way must be closed for the redevelopment of the property for a proposed multifamily development. Number two, the right-of-way is in excess of the 100 feet of right-of-way along the remainder of Boomer Road. Boomer Road is classified as a major arterial, and 100 feet is the requirement for a major arterial road. And an ONG gas line must be relocated or a private easement must be granted to ONG by the applicant. Are there any questions?
Questions?
Is any of that parking, public parking, or is that all associated with the old apartment complex?
I believe it's all associated with the apartments.
Could you...would you pull the map or the aerial photo back up, please? Did I hear you correctly, and I guess in front of the Domino's, the black line to the north and east, that's the right-of-way line there to the north of this tract?
Yes.
To the south of this tract, there's the right-of-way line?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the unique portion of this that has additional right-of-way? Is that...did I read correct and visualize correct? Okay.
Yes, at some time or another, maybe when these apartments were developed, they granted additional right-of-way. And the rest of the right-of-way of Boomer Road is 100 feet, so this is like 140.
So if we ever needed to widen it, we'd have to get additional right-of-way on each end of it anyway?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
We're closing 40 feet.
40 feet. Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Did we get good notice on this public hearing?
Yes, sir.
We do have one...I guess we'll open the public hearing, and we do have one request to speak, and that would be Kelly Harris.
Good evening. Kelly Harris, located at 923 South Lowry with Keystone Engineering, here representing the developers tonight. This is in conjunction with the agenda item that you have to keep postponing. We are requesting that the 40-foot of right-of-way be closed. Currently, there is 140-foot right-of-way in front of this piece of property, and both on the north and south, it is 100. So we're just asking to be the same as the others. We have spoken to ONG, and the only line there actually serves Domino's up from Bennett, which is...so they're along Bennett, and they run a line up there to serve Domino's. So we have talked to them about just relocating into the 100-foot right-of-way that will be left, and they're very agreeable to that, since the developers will pay for that. But other than that, we are on schedule, hopefully, to be on your agenda on the 21st for the remainder of the project. Any questions?
Ms. Harris? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have any further requests to speak, and so we will close the public hearing and ask staff to come back up with staff's recommendation.
Staff recommends that the council approve the request to close 40 feet of right-of-way of Boomer Road adjacent to property addressed as 1400 North Boomer Road.
Any questions to staff? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there a motion on this item?
I move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation. And that is approved 5 to 0. That takes us down to...I just lost it on my...our last public hearing. Receive public comments regarding a request for a MAP amendment to rezone property addressed as 424 East Thomas Avenue from Light Industrial to General Commercial.
Okay, now the MAP amendment. The property for the proposed MAP amendment is located on the corner of East Thomas, North Perkins Road, outlined in the red here. It is currently zoned IL, Light Industrial, and the zoning to the west and the south is also IL. The zoning to the east is IG, General Industrial, and to the north is CG, General Commercial. The requested zoning for the property is General Commercial to allow health care uses, and the comprehensive plan does support commercial zoning for this property. Our findings include the proposed CG zoning is consistent with the future land use of commercial, and the property is located adjacent to commercial zoning. Are there any questions?
Okay. Do we have good notice on this, Mr. Dorman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're going to open the public hearing. We do not have any requests to speak in favor or against, so we will close the public hearing and ask staff to come back with planning commission recommendation.
At its regular meeting on September 17th, 2013, the Planning Commission voted 6 to 0 to accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the MAP amendment as presented.
Any questions?
No, it's time, sir.
All right. Is there a motion on this recommendation from Planning Commission?
I move we accept staff recommendation.
Second. Motion and second to approve Planning Commission recommendation. And that is also approved 5 to 0. Okay, we do not have any general orders and now under resolutions, Mr. Dorman.
I would ask that you pass this item until you return, or excuse me, reconvene from your SUA regular meeting.
Okay. Good with that? Okay. That'll take us down to ordinances. We do have one ordinance on second reading, ordinance 3240.
We would ask that this item be passed until the 21st of October. We're still negotiating a few fine points to this agreement, so we're not quite ready with the contract.
Okay. All right. Officers and boards. Mr. Dorman, you're back up.
Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS Subsection 307B4 for the purpose of confidential communication regarding pending litigation, Thomas Wise versus City of Stillwater, case number CJ 2013-460, District Court of Payne County. It is my opinion that public disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the City Council to defend this pending litigation in the public interest.
Anything else?
No, sir, that's all.
Mr. Galloway.
Nothing further this evening.
Okay. Anything from the council?
Thankful for the change in the weather.
Can understand that. Anything else?
Yes, I got to notice that we had our seat of meeting canceled for tomorrow. Wondering if there would be a way that we can find...we've had that happen a couple of times.
We've...
It's tough on my schedule to not schedule things to keep that date open, and then it gets canceled the day before. Wondering if there's a way we can slip that in on a Monday schedule, like on our off-council day, so that we don't deal with this anymore.
We have...we've already taken steps to do that. That's why...one reason this is canceled tomorrow. We don't have any pending business for tomorrow, but we are going to start having these...instead of changing, since we've only got October, November, December left of the calendar year, we will continue to cancel the regularly scheduled meetings on Tuesdays and will schedule them on Monday evening. When we adopt the 2014, we'll make the permanent correction.
Sounds good.
So we do not anticipate any more Tuesday afternoon meetings, just...
All right. Anything else from councillors? Okay.
Are we...are you at questions and inquiries?
Almost. Almost. I'm showing our radio schedule that Vice Mayor Hopkins has got radio tomorrow morning on KSBI 815, 780 AM, and that Council Weaver has next Tuesday, 15th.
Mr. Mayor, last Tuesday, Stillwater City Government put on their Facebook and Twitter that I actually had radio tomorrow. Bill Vanez and I both believe that I have radio tomorrow, so I don't know what the schedule is.
Okay. Well, someone will be on radio tomorrow, and before we leave tonight, we will make sure we know who it is.
If you're going to show up as far as me, I won't be there.
We will get that figured out. Someone will be on radio tomorrow. And then the only other thing that I would like to share is that, to encourage people to go get informed, we have Valid Initiative on November 12th. Go get informed, plenty of ways to do that. City's website's a great way, on the bond issued 2013, on the city's website, stillwater.org.
Pick up signs if you need.
Okay. Now we're down to scheduling future.
Just asking a question on our...it's a year ago about when we were talking about the vehicle report. Where are we on that? Are we due...have I missed that?
No, we've continued to work on that, a group of the ops group, the management group has worked on that, and the inventory is completed. We were going to have it included in one of our special sessions, and we just haven't had a special session open for that. It probably needs to be with another item. We didn't feel it was justified, a long enough report to call you all in for one special meeting, so we will be adding that to one of your special meetings in the next probably 30 days.
Any other questions or inquiries?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay. We're going to recess the City Council meeting, and we're going to call to order the Stillwater Utility Authority meeting. And the first item on the agenda for utility authority, let's see if I've got the right one pulled up, is Consent Docket with items A through C, SUA Consent Docket.
I would move approval.
Second. Motion and second to approve Consent Docket. That is approved 5 to 0. That takes us down to General Orders, the Rural Water Advisory Board Semiannual Report. This is in our packet. Do we need presentation, or do we just accept it?
It's your pleasure. You've had a chance to read it. If you have no questions, you could accept it.
Does anybody have any questions? I do see a representative here from Rural Water. Anyone has any questions on that report?
Have good.
Not...do we need a motion to accept it?
Yes, sir.
Move to accept.
Second. Motion and second to accept the semiannual report. And that is accepted 5 to 0. That takes us down to Resolutions, and Resolution SUA 2013-5. Don't know who...
I guess I've got this one. A little context, I guess, to kind of get us going here. At previous meetings, the trustees have directed staff to start undertaking the process of preparing us to issue bonds for the Southwest Water Project and possibly a new power plant. And in the process of doing that, staff, council, financial consultants, just a lot of people involved in this process have reviewed the trust indenture, reviewed bond documents, just a lot of things, just to see if we can even issue these bonds. And in the context of doing that, it has been determined that Article 5, Section 30 of the Bond Indenture contains some language that will require you to wait for an election that would otherwise not be required by state statute before you can issue bonds for either one of these projects. And this is a limitation that previous SUA trustees placed on themselves and on their successors in this indenture. We've talked about it at length, and I think the consensus is that this limitation would unduly limit the ability of the SUA to issue or to participate in today's financial markets because of the fast-paced way that they operate, and also because it has a very low threshold, that being 10% of the yearly revenues. There are three exemptions to this provision, and in the past, the trustees have been able to issue bonds and notes under those exceptions. But however, in this instance, because of the type of projects that you're looking at, a new plant and a very large expansion of the water system, these exceptions will not apply. And what you basically have for you denied is a recommendation that would create a fourth exception to this provision in Article 5, which would permit the trustees to issue bonds and notes whenever you have a supermajority of the trustees. In other words, four members of the...four trustees and four members of the council of the, four trustees and four members of the council agree that such would be necessary. And this amendment is, that you have for you tonight, the documents that we have provided to you, would permit this supermajority exception should you choose to do so. We do recommend that you pass this amendment to the trust indenture, and I guess the other point I would mention to you is that this amendment will require a unanimous vote of the trustees per Article 7 of the trust indenture. And with that, I would entertain any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, I'll start. You said the exceptions won't apply, the three exceptions won't apply to this case. Why not?
The three exceptions are for, I always have to write these down because I forget exactly, they're one for refunding existing bonds, they are for project completion, in other words, you have a project in place and you need to raise funds to complete those. And then there's a third one, which allows the issuance of bonds and notes when they're necessary to protect the financial and physical integrity of the system when you have existing debt. So in other words, if you've got debt out there that you need to pay, you can issue bonds that will make sure that the system can still provide the revenue to do that. And in this instance, in either one of the instances that we have been tasked with preparing documents for, none of these will apply.
So you're, you are asking a unanimous vote to allow the city to borrow money, stop me if I'm wrong, in excess of 10%?
In excess of 10%.
Not the city government, but the utility authority.
In excess of 10% of the revenue of the Stillwater Utility Authority?
Yes, the way the provision reads right now, within any given fiscal year, the SUA cannot borrow more than 10% of the revenues received that year. And so your threshold would be somewhere, and I'm not the money man here, but I would assume probably in the six, seven million dollar range. But obviously, that won't fund very many projects. But in that context too, you'd have to go to an election.
That's the amount of the debt payment, or the amount of the debt?
The amount of the debt issued for that year.
You would not be able to replace a water treatment plant. You would not be able to fund the replacement of a sewer plant. You would not be able to fund the implementation of the Southwest Water Project contemplated at 40 million. And I think to put it in context, it would be like to the average person to think about if a young couple has a $50,000 annual income, it's saying they can never borrow more than 10% of that. They would have a hard time buying a good used car for 5,000, would never be able to buy a home. So it's, even though that 10% of 7 million, in the context of the magnitude of the assets, it's nearly impossible to ever do a major replacement with that. But I think, again, this suggested a supermajority vote, or two-thirds, ensures that it's, the trust authority does give it serious consideration.
So 7 million is the revenue brought in by this?
That's 10% of the annual gross.
7 million is the 10% of the annual gross.
The SUA's income for the sale of water, sewer, trash, all the electric sales, it's approximately 70 million. The current language says you can't issue debt in excess of 10% of that, would be 7 million. So any, any project that would require financing in excess of 7 million, you can't do today. But if you wanted to have that ability to do a 20 million or 30 million dollar replacement, such as the Southwest Water, which is estimated close to 40, it would require at least four of the five to vote to grant that exception to that limit.
And this has been in place?
30 years.
30 years.
It was, Stillwater Utilities Authority was created at the time that the Call Reservoir was funded for construction. In fact, they were created, it was created specifically for that purpose originally.
And I think, did you mention, Mr. Dorman, that this exception is mirrors state statute on trust authorities?
Yes, there's actually no state law that says that you have to go to a vote of the people, but the four-fifths majority is what is required in the Trust Act right now. So you're also consistent with the state statutes as well by doing this.
And do we know how much we need to borrow for, is it the power, the power plant, or is it a water issue?
There are two projects that are, that are driving this discussion right now. It's the Southwest Water Project, which, correct me, Mr. Galloway, I'm not the money man here, I think it's $40 million is one of them. And then the other project that we are working on right now is funding the building of a power plant as a result of the GRDA agreement, and that funding, I think, is somewhere in the neighborhood of 70 million dollars.
So 40 million and 70 million.
But the only thing that we've agreed to and have pushed has been the water, the Southwest Water.
Yes, sir. Well, actually.
That alone has, exceeds what the trust would allow.
That is correct, sir.
There's been, there's been a couple of significant changes since this was incorporated, and I just think we need to rewind it. For example, the $40 million in Southwest Water Projects. At the time that the trust was written, there was, there was not a policy or rate setting at that time to create funded depreciation. Today, we are fully funding depreciation in water and sewer. We have a capital improvement fund that is set aside for those debt payments. In the 70s, that was not considered. They were considering any debt would have to come out of the operating budget. We also did not have in the 70s an opportunity for, with a contract with GRDA, that would make the entire debt service payment if we do build a generating plan. But regardless of having those sources to pay it without raising any rates to the public, you still can't do it because of this restriction. And I just don't, I don't know that the trustees in the 70s contemplated having the fortunate status of having those funding sources to pay debt. And so it was trying to protect the operating revenue without putting additional burdens on the public. But in this case, you have revenue streams for all these debts without impacting the voters and the public. They're not going to have any rate impact because of any of these proposed debts. And I think that's the big difference.
Excuse me. The only other point I would make is, you know, the trust indenture is 30-plus years old, 1979, and at the time that the trust indenture was done, you also, not you, this council, but obviously the council in 1979 approved the lease agreement, that was for 50 years, that went alongside the trust indenture that financed initially the SUA line. You recently amended the trust indenture to, or not trust indenture, the lease agreement to accommodate the GRDA contract and some other long-term agreements. So this is kind of along the same lines. It's, we're talking about an old document that has a restriction that quite frankly is very unique to Stillwater. Most cities don't have this. And so it's, this is something that probably just needs to be done. It's time to look at that in a more modern framework than it was in 1979. So just as you amended the lease agreement, we're certainly recommending that you amend this trust indenture as well.
And this, this vote for this change doesn't authorize any debt proceeding in the elect.
Say that again.
This doesn't authorize any debt proceeding. It just allows you in the future, in the near future, when an issue comes before you to decide whether to finance a generating plant or the Southwest Water Project, at that time, you vote for the debt, and it will take four or five of you to do that, if this were, so, you know, you don't create any debt by approving this tonight. You only allow yourself the opportunity to do that.
Okay, what if we borrowed money and then we, something happened, devil's advocate here, and there's a default? Who pays that money then? Does that go back to the citizens?
No. The default would, the money is, the debt is secured by the assets of the Stillwater Utilities Authority. At no time is it, is it a debt of the city of Stillwater. And so there's no way that trust debt can be imputed to the city. There's a, there was a case in Tulsa a couple of years ago involving an attempt by a bank in Tulsa to try to collect on a, on a default by a loan by an airport trust in Tulsa, and they went to the city to try to collect that money. The city paid them, Supreme Court of Oklahoma said, huh-uh, that's a trust debt, that's not the city's debt. You can't place that obligation on the citizens. So the short answer, no way can this be imputed back to the citizens in the form of taxes or anything else.
So if I understand you, the, by passing this, it puts us in a position to issue 40 million dollars for the debt without going to a vote of the people?
Yes, sir.
And the current, with the way it's currently, the trust indenture is currently structured, anything over that 10% limitation would require a vote. That's really what's at issue.
Yes, sir, that's true.
Okay. I've got, I've got a couple of questions, but I see Mr. Kaiser in the room, and, Mr. Kaiser, would you mind coming forward? The reason, I think we have a couple of questions for you, if you wouldn't mind sharing with us your history with this trust agreement and the history and the knowledge that you have on this trust agreement.
Certainly. My name's Don Kaiser. I have had the pleasure, honor, and good fortune to have served the City of Stillwater as bond counsel on the issuance of their GO and revenue debt for 30-plus years. I was here when the, when the indenture was drafted and created. I was a new lawyer in the firm that served as bond counsel at that time, so I wasn't the primary draftsman, but the partner who was, I remember him having many conversations with the Board of Commissioners at the time, and Mr. Thomas, Bill Thomas, who was the mayor. And I believe that the only other person, I think, in the room who perhaps was here at the time may be Marcy Lamb, so she can also give you a little bit of historical perspective as well.
Way to call her out.
She's much younger than I am.
She started here with you, sir.
But I can, just by way of, to reiterate, I suppose, what Mr. Dorman said, this provision is unique to the City of Stillwater. I, I've never seen it in another indenture that I've worked with over the years, and I was speaking with another gentleman who's working on the, on the power plant project as underwriter to the, as underwriters' counsel to the potential underwriter, and he was a former partner in the same firm. And he, I asked him if he'd ever seen that provision like this, and he said that he had not. My memory and recollection is that the, there were two, when the Call Pipeline Project was done, there were two bond issues that were approved. There was a $12 million GO issue in the balance, so the project was financed through the, through the public trust. And the Board of Commissioners at the time were so focused, I suppose, on getting the Call Project done, that they, they wanted to make sure that public opinion was very supportive behind that project. And as a means of ensuring that, I think that they negotiated. I remember Scott Brown, who was the partner at the time, having conversations and advising Mr. Thomas that this would be extremely restrictive should the SUA remain in place and available for future financings. And my memory, and Marcy, correct me if I'm wrong, but my memory is that they, at the time, weren't really concerned about future financings. And so it is something that is unique to Stillwater, extremely restrictive, not, you know, most cities, I think, when they consider forming a public trust, they're looking down the road. They're looking for something that is available to finance opportunities that may arise. And I just don't think that was the focus at the time this authority was created. That's really all I can offer, I think, mayor.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kaiser?
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for any of our staff?
I do. Is there a reason we have to vote tonight?
Yes, we are in the process of having ratings done on the power plant bonds this week, and one of the questions that came up in the, in the presentation to the rating company was over this provision and what was its status. And they were advised that the board, the council, excuse me, the trust, I get, excuse me, I get confused with all the various entities, that the trust would be taking it up tonight and making a decision on it. So if it was not to be, we really need to resolve it so we can give them an answer.
Do we know public opinion on this?
I've not received a single telephone call on this, but that's certainly not indicative of what that might be.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would agree that that 10% limitation of the total amount of debt in one year you could take on as an authority is very conservative, extremely low. There are other measurements you could use, though, I think, and this is the first time I've been a part of a discussion about this subject. I wish we could have talked about it a year ago when we were talking about the water plant and all the water issues. That would have been salient to that conversation way back then. And to be, to have this as you got to vote tonight puts us in an awkward position. I'd like to know what other municipalities have in their trust indenture. What kind of limitations do they have? Maybe they have none. What does OMPA have as a requirement? What does OG&E have as a requirement? And most, I know with colleges and universities, we have a standard of expenses for debt not being greater than 7% of your operating budget. So, you know, there are, rating agencies use standards, and so I can't believe that we have to completely throw out any kind of measurement to judge what a reasonable and fair amount of debt is and just lay it on the backs of whoever the council is at that given moment in time. And the comment was made about trustees making decisions for the future. This is a big decision, and it's for not only now, but for the future. And I don't want to make it because we've been pressed up on a deadline for a particular bond issue. This should be something we're thinking about over any debt, over any period of time, and think about the future. That's just where I am on this.
I am highly frustrated, and I'm frustrated at, we've known of this issue. Let me rephrase that. I know staff has known of this issue, and it's been kicked down the road, and we have been put in a position under the gun, and it is not a fair position to be put in. What I might suggest is that we take action tonight and that we plan on readdressing this issue. This trust agreement can be amended, it can be amended again, and if there is a better measurement tool, if there is a better yardstick to be using, then we need to be using it.
From where I'm sitting, it's not such a horrible idea on 40 million dollars worth of debt to let the people decide. It's not such a bad idea. It's not such a bad idea. Now, if it was $7 million or $10 million, maybe the authority ought to do that. But, and I appreciate emergency and all that sort of thing. But we could have had that water system vote out there for, you know, a long time. It's not an emergency today.
And it's $110 million.
Well, when you add the two, yeah.
Yes, so that even makes it greater. And I really, we represent the public, and I really would like, doesn't even have to be a vote, but some kind of public input. And this was on the agenda just this week. So I don't, if we haven't heard anything, it's probably because the public didn't know about it. I don't want to take the public out of it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? Councilwoman Noble, I struggled with this too tremendously. I was debriefed on it quite recently. And I had some time to go to my kitchen cabinet and talk to some people much wiser than myself. And I don't know exactly what happened in terms of why it wasn't brought up sooner. I don't presume to speak for anyone. I can only speak from my own experience. I support the measure tonight on two premises. Like the mayor said, it can be amended. And secondly, it is the job of the trust to make a decision because the people willed it that way. I don't like it. I don't particularly like the idea, like Councilman Weaver said, of taking the people out of the equation. But I don't necessarily think that happened because I think we were appointed by the people to make these decisions. Initially, the wording was, remove the 10% clause altogether. Now, the wording is a supermajority vote of the council. There's nothing, if whether we do it or whether a future council does it, it's going to get done eventually. This way, the people's will is still included. If the people don't like it, they'll come to this council meeting and they'll change it. I'm more comfortable with a supermajority vote than I ever was a 10% vote or removing the 10% verbiage altogether. I don't like the idea of pulling the 10% clause out. I think it's good. Mr. Weaver talked about the 7% limit of their operating budget. I mean, I don't even buy name-brand potato chips. So I'm pretty conservative, I think. But, except for Doritos, I do buy those. But when the, when the verbiage of the 10% limit, I liked it, but it's not practical. The people want water. We know that. Got beat over the head with that when I first came on council. People want the power plant. Wanted it for a long time. I think it's a good measure. These two debts can be retired in a considerable amount of time because of the revenues they produce. As opposed to going in debt because we want all of our streets to be blue because we just really like the color blue. So the debt can be retired. It is something that would be a benefit to all the citizens, not just one, one particular group. It would benefit everyone. And I like the fact that the debt has a way to be paid back. It has a direct benefit to the, to the citizens. And it's changed the indenture in a way that I believe the will of the people stays in thread of the strongest. So for me personally, I would move approval of this resolution. If I've worded that correctly.
Just a brief comment. What we're voting on tonight is only a change in the trust indenture. We're not voting to commit any money to, or anything. That's another vote down the road. So the real issue, do we vote for the trust indenture tonight? That doesn't commit us to the debt at this particular time. That'll call, add another vote and could be another public hearing if we needed it, a public hearing if we needed it. I'm ready to vote.
There's a motion out there.
I'll second it.
There's a motion to second. Is there a discussion on this?
If we don't vote, if the debt's still going to be retired, we're not arguing about the debt not being retired, correct?
Not tonight, no.
No, okay. So what we're really saying tonight is that the council can vote in excess of 10%, we can borrow in excess of 10% with the council's supermajority approval. And it used to be, or what's in there right now, is that the people needed to vote. And so that's what we're voting on right now, correct?
Kinda. To me, this amendment adds a, it doesn't, the way the trust indenture is, is worded, and this is one of those, I have reread that trust indenture multiple times in the last couple of weeks. And it's amazing how lawyer language doesn't change a lot in 40 years. The way that that section is worded is it makes a statement, and then it gives exceptions to the statement. This is adding another exception to the rule. That's how I am interpreting this. And that exception is consistent with the state law on public trusts. I would agree with you that this exception does make it less... Well, this exception does make financing through the utility authority a viable option with this exception. And it's not a viable option without the exception. Yes, sir.
May I ask a turn to your question? If this were approved, in any circumstance where only three members of the trust voted to have the exceeded debt, so that would fail. Would the trustee, because we haven't modified the other language, would the trustees then have the opportunity to vote to call an election?
Yes, sir.
So they still have that opportunity to have an election if less than four trustees feel comfortable in exceeding it. So if you only had three yes votes to exceed the 10%, your only other alternative would have been a new motion to have an election of the people. So it doesn't completely eliminate that possibility.
You have to have a clear consensus, a supermajority, four votes, before you could issue the debt. And it would be four votes of both the authority and the city council. Although granted, they are the same body.
But you said this vote tonight has to be taken tonight, and it has to be unanimous.
To amend the, the trust indenture, which is what we're doing tonight, takes a unanimous vote. That's in Article VII of the trust indenture.
When this trust was first created, it was created by the city council in 1979, 1980. There's a City Council Act.
Yes, sir.
Meaning it was not voted, that the people did not vote on this document?
That is correct. Actually, it was the trustees that, the, the, trustors is actually who did it. But it was the city council for all intents and purposes. And then the council, the city council accepted the beneficial interest.
Any other questions or comment or discussion?
I understand the expedient nature of the desired change, but it's, it's a bad position to be in, for sure. I would not be one to be so vocal about it if I hadn't done my homework, if I hadn't came and talked to staff. And again, I will emphasize I was only very recently debriefed on the subject.
Call the question.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the trust amendment as stated before us. Let's vote. And that motion fails three to two with trustee Weaver and trustee Noble voting no. No other items on the SUA agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
That's proof five to zero. SUA is adjourned. We're going to reconvene city council. We don't really have to take action and vote on this resolution, do we?
No, sir.